Still waiting on Josh. I'm not sure where he just.
He's in the bathroom.
Did you drop that off with you or is that mine?
That's yours.
Is this what we got emailed today?
Uh huh.
Are you all here?
Yeah, we're all here. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Highlands Town Board of Commissioners for Thursday, October the 16th, 2025. As always, we will start with a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. So will you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our third item tonight will be the statement of conflict of interest. I call that statement, I call attention for all the commissioners of that statement. If there's any issue that we have before the board tonight and there's a conflict, of course, we must declare that conflict. The next item will be the public comment period. I will now invite anyone who would like to make a public comment to come before the board and please state your name and we would hope that you would hold your comments to three minutes or less, but I will now open up the floor for anyone who would like to make a public comment tonight.
Hello, I would just ask that if anything is done.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Steve. My name is Steve. Thank you.
Your last name?
I'd like to remain anonymous beyond that. If anybody doesn't know who I am already, please can I just get to my point? Thank you. I would like to request that if anything is done about outside sales practices, that that, if that ordinance is finally held that, or changed and held, that it be implemented right away immediately so that we don't lose the rest of the year for some January thing or some next summer thing because we've been cooked. We've lost all of our business from Hurricane Helene, front end and back end, and this is our only chance. And when it's peaceful on Main Street, we sell art. There are five people in our gallery right now on our Blink camera because it's quiet over there and when it's not quiet, we have a struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Hearing none, we will now move on to item number five, and that is to review and approve the agenda. Do we have any changes to the proposed agenda?
Make a motion to approve. Second?
All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Thank you. The next item will be the approval of the September 18th regular meeting minutes. Do I have any changes, corrections, or clarifications to those minutes?
Motion to approve. Second?
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you. The next item will be the reports, starting with the mayor's report. Let me just make a few comments. I will be having my community coffee tomorrow at 11 o'clock at the Hudson Library. It's the last meeting of the year. I'll be talking about construction projects for Highlands that are either in process or will possibly be occurring. We'll look at town infrastructure issues, commercial projects, and residential. So with that said, one of the things that I really appreciate that Bobby Henry, our code enforcement person is doing, he provides in that agenda packet that we get, the consent agenda, a real list and clear listing of things that he has been doing to enforce the codes in the town and building permits and so forth. One of the things that I was really impressed with with the last report was that he goes around and checks for erosion control problems and silt fences. And some people have said that sometimes the bigger projects aren't enforced, but I was noticing Mr. Henry has gone to, for example, River Rock numerous times in the past month, our lady of the mountains, construction project, the sanctuary, and other projects that he does go and do those inspections and checks to make sure that all the erosion protocols are being followed. So I appreciate that. Other thing was the road closure that DOT implemented to replace culverts and decided this week, starting Monday, to close 64 between Highlands and Cassers for successive nights. I was delighted to realize that they brought in extra crews, we were told. So they got ahead of schedule and they did not have to close the road tonight. And you know, that's great for the community. I will say this, though, we do not control what DOT does. When they come through town on a road project, they coordinate with us, like when we had the major paving on Main Street. But you know, they have their schedule, they have their resources. In this particular case, replacing those culverts, I suspect is a beginning step for them resurfacing that road, which is in much need of repair and resurfacing in several areas. So I appreciate that they did get that done quickly. Some people were saying, well, why couldn't you tell DOT to do this after leaf season? One of the problems is asphalt is not usable and available once it starts getting cold. If they delayed that project, they would start doing it in the spring and we'd be in the same situation, tourists coming in, road closure. So I know it was inconvenient and kind of traumatic for some people, but I'm glad that that now is behind us. Also something I noticed yesterday, in a way, it's kind of a changing cycle with the town of Highlands. Where I live, I hear the sirens for the ambulances and fire trucks, which were several yesterday, we had a motorcycle accident within the town. Then when I was going to the grocery store later in the evening, there was a fire truck at one of our businesses on Main Street and our firemen had responded. My point I'm making is that we have invested in things like our police force. We've invested in full-time firemen and so forth, and there's a reason for it, especially this time of year, there's a lot of activity that needs to be responded to with these folks, and I appreciate all of their work that they do. That is all that I have, so I'm going to now turn it over to the commissioners for any updates or reports that they'd like to make. Hearing none, I will now ask for our town manager, Josh Ward, to give us an update.
Well, the mayor went over the culvert replacement project, which finished up last night. We had a tremendous amount of calls. We had good. We had contact all the way through with the DOT. They were good to work with. And it wasn't inconvenience, but luckily we were able to use our app and our website to get the announcements out as quickly as we could. So I'm glad they're finished up with that. If some of you have been out toward Little Bear Pen the last couple of days, the DOT did get the caution light activated there. As you pull out of Little Bear Pen, there's flashing lights. And then as you enter into that area, going both directions in and out of town, there's flashing lights letting you know that there's cars entering the road. So hopefully that that will work out well for cars pulling out of Little Bear Pen, hopefully prevent accidents in that area. Our Dog Mountain water line replacement project is underway. They have removed the old tank at the top of the mountain and they had to blast, or not blast, but chip away a lot of rock that was underneath that tank to widen out an area up top to bring in materials and get turned around. They have a temporary tank that's servicing the houses there in that area while they're doing the line replacement. So that's going well. Also, the paving around town that the town's doing, Parker Paving out of Civil was chosen. They have finished Maney Road, Pickle Summer and Cook, and they're going to be coming back next week and paving the entrance to the rec park. It's in bad shape right now. They're putting a base coat on that. And then they'll start with other streets that we have on the list. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item, number eight, is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions about the consent agenda that was in the packet?
I had just one question. I had just one question.
Okay.
The last thing, the internal controls policy approval for the ARP A grant, is that just boilerplate that they give us that we have to agree to?
It is. And we thought we had approved one prior to this, but we didn't. So we just happened to come back through and have you guys to approve that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second?
Second. Okay. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next item, number nine, the Boys and Girls Club MOU for the rec park location, Josh Ward.
So the committee that was appointed to look at the memorandum of understanding between the Boys and Girls Club of the Plateau and the Town of Highlands to locate a facility on the rec park property where the Houston House was located, has met a couple of times and come up with the memorandum of understanding. We sent that to the town attorney. Nick has reviewed that and got that back to us. You have it in your packet tonight for approval. The committee would like to recommend approval so that we could submit this MOU to the Partef folks so they could review it and get back with us to make sure. We have to have final review from Partef before we can proceed with the project and for them to raise the funds for it.
Has Partef given us any indication of whether they think this is okay or not?
They have explained what they would like to see, like having it open to the public, you know, when they can and things like that. And I feel like that we've given them what they asked for, but it has to go, you know, in front of their board and be reviewed and then they'll, you know, give us information back. And then if we have to amend something like that, I don't know how long it's going to take for them to review it. So we need to get, you know, get it to them as quickly as possible.
I thought it was good. I just had one question or one suggestion maybe. And that's under number nine, under Boys and Girls Club VGC P. And that is that they have parents or guardians who work in Highlands, Macon County. Shouldn't that be Highlands Township or Highlands Area? As opposed to, I mean, if it's just in the, I don't know, it's a legal thing that somebody could interpret that to mean just within the town limits as opposed to the hospital? And it's a simple amendment.
Let's ask Nick what his feeling is.
Can you point that section again?
It's under number two responsibilities of parties, A. Number nine, it's the last line and it's actually bolded here. It's free out-of-school programming for youth of grades K through 12 who reside or have parents slash guardians who work in Highlands, Macon County, as opposed to the Highlands Township or the Highlands Area. Because it could be interpreted that you actually have to work within the town limits.
Okay, so just, I'm wanting to make sure I'm understanding correctly because of the intent, because the MOU that came to us, you know, that was the language that came to us. And I'm wondering, the way I read that is reside in Highlands, comma, Macon County. I wasn't necessarily reading that as just within Highland. Is the goal to say just within the Highlands Town Limits or in Macon County as well?
No, we did that, sorry, because we do have essential workers that work in town that have kids.
Oh, in my office.
Sorry. That have kids and it is on. Sorry. So the initial thing, Canada just said Highlands, period. But we wanted to open it up to, you know, we have the students that are in, that come from like Sotola or something that are in school up here. So we wanted to allow them to be able to, because they're needed at the Boys and Girls Club.
Right, so I would just add, instead of a comma, an or.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure before I did that. So is I within the town limits of Highlands or Macon County?
I'm not, but it's meant for the kids that live in Highlands Plateau, not just Town of Highlands Township as well, or kids that live. But I'm not trying, I don't know how to say it the right way. We're not, it doesn't mean automatically that if you live in Macon County, you, it's not intended for that. It's intended for Highlands and the Plateau.
Right.
Okay.
Highlands, comma, Macon County, not.
So in other words, so that Macon County does not mean you can live in the county or you can work in the county. You have to live in, you have to work in Highlands of Macon County.
Correct.
Okay, so I think.
Not or, but.
Right, so I would say that it would.
Or just Highlands.
Right, Highlands Township or Highlands Area or the Highlands Area of Macon County or.
Or the Plateau.
Yeah.
Well, Plateau goes all the way to Cassers if you look at geology.
But we also, we don't want to, I don't want to be so exclusive and it's, because we also have scaly.
I agree.
All Highlands School District, I want to say.
Right, I agree. That's why I'm trying to figure out how you're inclusive without making it be.
Yeah.
Everywhere else.
Yeah, right. That's exactly what I was getting at. Yeah. And that's what we were trying to work with. We're just trying to how to word it to.
I understand. So I'm just trying to figure out, because to me, you could interpret this several ways. Nick obviously interpreted differently than I interpreted.
Right, so reside or have parents or guardians who work in.
The Highlands Area of Macon County.
Of Macon County. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that resolves it, and especially at this level, it resolves it.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with that if you want to.
If you want to make a motion.
Any other questions? I did want to bring up, I think all of us received some feedback by one resident who, to me in his communication, bringing up concerns that aren't in the MOU, but when we go to have a formal lease, some of those concerns that were brought up, that's where those issues would be addressed. This is just as basic as it is, a memorandum of understanding.
Just to get the ball rolling for funding.
And part of.
And part of.
It's mainly what this is for.
Any other questions?
Could you make a motion?
I did not, but you're welcome to do it with your.
With your.
Well, I'm getting it. Y'all are getting it.
Well, yeah, we're the committee, I guess, on the committee.
Yeah.
It comes out of committee. You didn't even have to have a second.
All right, I make a motion to approve with the change to 2A9, where it says Highlands, comma, Macon County, to, who work in the Highlands Area of Macon County.
Okay. Second? Any further?
Can I ask clarification? Just want to make sure I write it the right way. So it would read now, who reside or have parents who work in the Highlands Area of Macon County?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes.
It's there.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please raise your hand by signifying by saying aye. Thank you. Thank you. And Josh, we can now move forward with getting Partef approval. Very good. All right, item number 10, the Solicitation Ordinance Amendments. We had a workshop where we discussed a draft of the amendment. We asked our town attorney to develop a formal amendment ordinance, and I'm going to turn it over now to our town attorney, Nick Tosco.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So yes, as we discussed before, we, you know, heard the issues that we've been experiencing relating to solicitors and solicitation. And so what we did is we took the current, the current, current Chapter 6, Article 3, and consolidated it. We used examples from other North Carolina jurisdictions. We followed the state statute. What we did is ensured we're not coming up against any issue of the First Amendment or anything and came up with what you have before you, which essentially consolidates what was kind of splintered out, you know, regulations as it relates to peddlers or solicitors or transient vendors or whatever. And at the end of the day, there's a lot of overlap with that. And so we consolidated it to one definition of solicitation, and it captures all those situations. And we assured, you know, we ensured that we were going to add in aggressive manner part of that so that if there is, you know, consistent solicitation that is where somebody has refused, but it's still being done, that can be considered an aggressive manner. So we added that in the definition. We also ensured that the definition of a quote-unquote person who is soliciting could be both the company and the individual, either one. So at the, you know, law enforcement's discretion on how they want to pursue those matters, that gives them the flexibility to do that. And then finally, we upped the civil penalties, which is the, you know, the meat of this to the maximum allowed by state law, which is $500 for every violation. So the only thing I'll add, and I'm happy to take any questions, is that, you know, we were, we were trying to attack the issue from multiple angles. So what we did is we kind of set the geographic boundary, so to speak, of where this violation can occur, is on public property, which is what we have control of, or on private property without the permission of the property owner. So that in those situations, we heard about workshop where somebody is, you know, an ALCO or an area that is, you know, kind of owned by an HOA or, you know, not HOA, but you know, a landlord. If they don't have the permission to lead soliciting as defined in the ordinance, then they could also be cited for violation. So we think that that is kind of a comprehensive way of attacking this issue and hopefully it gives law enforcement all the tools in the toolbox and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
We, I mean, we talked about this for an entire work session. I don't want to meet sound flippant and just run into this, but I make a motion to approve as revised.
Okay.
I have one question and that is, is the cameras now the ones you're just.
If somebody is speaking, I cannot hear.
Hi, it was mentioned that cameras owned by the city could assist on, you know, consistent breaking of this ordinance if it's put in place. And my question is, is that until the city has more cameras, can other cameras be donated? I know there are people who have a movement of wanting to donate cameras to the city in the specific areas where these kinds of activities go on more heavily than others. So I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there as part of the thought process. Thank you.
I just want to make the comment for your, for your previous question, Steve, is on section two, is this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you. That is approved and will go into effect immediately. All right, the next item, number 11, Highlands Neighborhood Coalition Citizen Survey. Mr. Worrell asked that they be allowed to come and do a presentation where they share their survey results. So I know Kathy Henson and James Worrell is here and they will make a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Slocum, can you hear me? Okay. Can we get slide number one up, please? Give me, that's okay. I just can't see behind me. Give me, that's okay, I just can't see behind me.
Well, took a little time, thank you all very much, a little bear pen. I was talking to them, not y'all. Thank. Thank you very much for everything y'all have done on this little bear pen mountain thing. It's, it's, it's going to assuage a lot of fears among those residents, and I really appreciate Josh, Lamar, all of you for working on that while we're waiting for this to load up. Thank you.
Oh. There we go. We got it?
We're good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. If you don't mind, we don't have that many slides. If we could get through them and then open the floor for questions and discussion.
Sure.
Okay, so slide number two, please. On behalf of the Highlands Neighborhood Coalition, I'm Kathy Henson, here with my fellow board member, James Worrell. I'd like to acknowledge Lila Howland in the audience, and Carol Gable and Tom Coley, who assure us they're glued to YouTube watching the presentation from home. I wanted to tell you a little bit about why we decided to do this survey. We were created back in 2020 as a nonprofit civic organization of 501(c)(4), for those of you familiar with the tax code. So we're a nonprofit organization made up of neighbors and neighborhoods working to preserve the past, protect the present, and advocate for the future of our community. To be effective, we need to know what our residents need, want, and are thinking. And the catalyst for this survey was actually Hurricane Helene, because we received a lot of questions from neighbors and residents about where to go for information, where to go for Wi-Fi, where to go for power, how to find out what neighborhoods had power, how to get into town, how to get out of town. So we realized that if we're being looked at as a resource for residents and neighborhoods and neighbors, that we needed to do a better job of finding out what the town was doing and be part of that process. So what brought us here is how do we help disseminate information before, during, and after emergencies? And then support the organizations in town that have needs after an event like the hurricane? Next slide, please. I wanna give you the definitions that we use when we talk about residents. We think of residents in, in three different ways. The full-time, year-round residents, basically those are the individuals who are eligible to vote in Highlands. The part-time, year-round residents, who are here year-round, but not more than 180 days. And that, as many of you know, the 180 days is the amount of time you can't spend out of your state that you declare residency in for tax purposes. So those of us who are part-time, year-round, and then the third category, who are the seasonal residents, who stay continuously, typically for more than a month, but less than six months, because again, that runs into the 180 days where you can't stay outside your own state. Our focus are these three categories of residents who own homes solely for their personal use. We wanna know who are they, where are they, and what do they think of Highlands as a place to live? Because our focus is livability. How do we ensure that Highlands continues to be a place that people can live? Our focus is not, is Highlands a good place to do business? Our focus is not, is Highlands a good place to spend a weekend? It's, the focus is, is Highlands a good place to live? Next slide, please. So our survey questions were, there were only 10. We didn't ask that anybody identified their names, that was optional. We asked where they lived, basically give us a street name or a neighborhood, because we're interested in what part of town they live in. We suspect they're predominantly R1 and R2. We asked two specific questions. What businesses do you use most often in Highlands? And what businesses would you like to see added just for, to make life better in Highlands? So those were two kind of specific questions about businesses. And then we asked, what charities do you support either financially or through volunteering? So two specific questions is, that, questions that we asked them to answer. And then we had three open-ended questions. What do you find special about Highlands? What are the greatest threats to Highlands continuing to be a good place to live? And just in open-ended, do you have any other comments or concerns? And I'd like to have James address how he disseminated the survey, and where it was advertised, and kind of the top-line responses that we've gotten so far.
Thank you, Kathy. So as Kathy said, we, we, we wanted to reach as many residents as we possibly could. We started with those folks that we already knew and had connections with. So we have a broad supporter network, we started there. We then reached out to other neighborhoods, other neighborhood organizations, other property owners' organizations, HOAs and the like. Not all of them are interested in doing this, but we started, you know, developing more email contacts that way. And then finally, we used the public media. We ran ads, we actually were lucky enough that the, the two newspapers ran articles about it. And we think based on those circulations, the number of emails that we were able to send out that weren't bounced back, that our outreach should have been to more than 5,000 total people. One of the things that we'll talk a little bit about, not much, is, you know, the demographic up here is important. As, as you know, there are a certain number of voters, I think I read in the paper today, it's 970 or something like that. But the seasonal population and the part-time population balloons dramatically. And so as, as you've seen, we're interested in those folks who are living here, whether it's all the time or part of the time, and we're not really sure how many that is. So we think we've done a good job so far of outreach, but Kathy may have mentioned, we're not done yet. We wanna reach everyone, and we're continuing to figure out how we can reach more people. But at this time, we wanted to go ahead and start the dialogue about what we found so far, so that you can start thinking about it, and hopefully we can start discussing it more. The survey responses have been collected so far over a 60-day period. We think this is the largest survey outreach that has been done up here since the 2020 Community Plan. Now, that 2020 Community Plan was a much broader population. It was, we, we are focused on the town limits. I mean, we, we are trying to really focus on those folks that are here, specifically in Highlands. So we're not really sure, they had about 1,000 responses. We aspire to that, but I'm not sure we can reach it, because their reach was so much broader than ours. The next slide, please, Gibby. So these are the newspaper articles, I'm not gonna spend really any time on this. We did have the luck with Kim's paper in The Highlander to get some articles in the paper. We used our website, we used paid ads to get to folks. And so let's get into who participated and move that along. So as Kathy said, we've got these three buckets of, of residents, and it was basically a third, a third, a third so far. About 32% full-time, 36% part-time, 31% seasonal, as Kathy said. Just as an example, I mean, our demographic on the board, Kathy's a part-time resident, you're here off and on all year. I'm now a seasonal resident, I'm here, you know, as most of y'all know, because I call you all the time. But I'm here, you know, for a good chunk, just short of six months. Lila Howland, who's out here, who's a board member, she's here full-time. So we're, we, we think we're getting a pretty good mix of the respondents that we need. But it is ongoing. The details that we want to discuss with you at a high level today, we'll get into. But we're hoping this is the start of a discussion. A connection between residents of the town that, that maybe is more robust than you've been able to, and hopefully we can, we can help with that. So let's get on to the responses to the four main questions. One, what businesses do residents frequent? They named dozens, if you'll flip it, Gibby. This detail will be helpful to the business community too, and we anticipate being able to meet with them as well. But gathering data on these businesses that residents would like to see added, I think is really important, and we're still collating that information. But one of the things is, these residents said loudly that there were three top areas that then, it was Bryson's Grocery, it was Restaurants collectively, and we, we're working on getting more detail for those restaurant owners on that, and then Reeves Ace Hardware. These were the top responses that we got of where people go, whether part-time, full-time, or seasonal. This is where they're going. So a question about involvement in the community, which charities do you support through contributions and/or volunteering? As a. We, this is the only question that we had where we actually listed anything. Every other question was a full, open comment box, but we were, we, we talked about that, and we really wanted to not get the answer, I support a lot of stuff. Or I, you know, we wanted to get some specific answers. We listed eight charities, and so far we've gotten 25. And I, I think this is an important slide for us, that our residents are invested in the community, and they're investing in the community. And this is important to, obviously, all of our local residents, no matter what their category, because these entities help everyone. They may help people, we've been talking about the Boys and Girls Club, that, that's an important one for these folks too. And I think all of these things put, you know, help bring the community together, bring our residents together, and give us something that we can contribute that's not self-interested in any way, but is interested in the community. So we, we think this is important, we wanna drill down into this more, find out who, where, and what they're giving. But at a high level, we think this is a, this is a good discussion area for us to be working with the town and, and the business community on. Residents have listed 25, as I said, we're gonna need to analyze this a little bit more. But I think the two open-ended questions, as Kathy mentioned, were the ones where we got so much interesting comment and input, far more than you can put on a, on a screen. But just at a very high level, the question that, as Kathy described, what do you find special about Highlands? And what are the threats to Highlands, I wanna go over for a few minutes. First, on the what do you find special about Highlands? This is just what they call a word cloud, it's simply a picture. We're, I'm gonna give you some more detail in just a second. It shouldn't surprise anybody after the last week or so that we've had that, that weather is a big component of what people like about Highlands, and we've highlighted that in, in green. That was the top response of what people found special about Highlands. Residents have very strong feelings about Highlands as their home. And Gibby, if you'll go to the next one, the top four responses that were given were weather, natural beauty, people, and the people of Highlands, and small-town living, that feeling of small-town living. This was, this was very consistent across all the demographic that we can see. Interestingly, while others may tell you this, we recognize town leadership can't really do anything about the weather, and, and the natural beauty, which we wanna protect. Obviously, you can have something to do with that. But who's here and, and, and what types of people are here? We, we, we can talk about and work on. And particularly the feel of the place, how it feels, small-town living, the type of pace that we have, clearly, the town and its leaders can have some impact on that. The other major open-ended question that we had was, what are the greatest threats to the livability of Highlands, according to residents? And again, this is just one of those pictures, it's a word cloud. The number-one answer was short-term rentals in neighborhoods, we've highlighted that. I think if you go to the next slide, you can see the top four threats identified by residents so far. And again, we are still continuing to, to gather information. Unlike the special attributes like weather that the town cannot control, these, these responses offer more opportunity to work on, we think. Short-term rentals, over-tourism, over-development, and loss of small-town feeling. Interesting, you know, interesting comparison, small-town feeling's very important, and there's concern about small-town feeling. Natural beauty's very important. These things are very important on one side, and then on the other side, people are giving us feedback. This is what I'm concerned about. These are the things that make me worry about whether this will be a livable community for me in the future. Again, residents have very strong feelings about what the town should, should work on, and what you should not be working on, and we're gathering more of that information as we speak. As we conclude the survey, and I'm not sure when that'll be, because we wanna try to get as much input as we can and finalize the analysis. These will be great discussion points, we think, and, and great information for you as town leaders to work on. I think the next slide is yours, Kathy, if you wanna go.
So one of the things we learned when you do open-ended questions is you get a whole lot of comments, and it's really hard to gather them easily and quickly. So we, we probably have 2,000, 2,500 comments that people just listed under comments and concerns. And while James is working very diligently as a stenographer, the only one we decided to present tonight was a common theme. It certainly, there's so much to mine in here, but one of the common themes in the concerns and comments was about livability. You know, is Highlands a good place to live? And what is going on that is making that more difficult and could be done to make it less difficult? And a lot of the part-time and seasonal folks historically have become full-time residents. You know, they've been here a long time, and they decide to retire here. And we're a little concerned about the people who are now saying, maybe not. And, and we certainly wanna continue to engage people who have been here a good long time, who have been supportive members of the community. And so when they are responding, and even full-time residents say the same thing, and recent converts from perhaps part-time to full-time, things that they wish they had known or thought about, or is making life difficult to be a full-time resident. Not surprisingly, traffic and congestion is at the top of the list. You know, for those of us who wanna run to the grocery store, we're now looking at Google Maps to go a mile, to see how much traffic is downtown or how to get around. And again, some of these things may be under town control, most of them aren't, but they certainly could warrant a discussion in some policy choices. So some of the things that are concerning people about livability, traffic and congestion, access to health care, that was not something we expected. I think it's really more of a full-time resident concern that either once they moved here or that they live here, it's hard to access health care. They have to go off the mountain. We see a lot of this discussion, where do you go? Do you go to Franklin, Gainesville, Asheville? You know, the different places that people have to go because they can't transport their doctors here. So that was an issue that I, that hadn't occurred to me before. And related to that is emergency care. We have had some anecdotes about people who had health care emergencies and found out the hard way that either their insurance didn't cover ambulance taking them from the local hospital to another hospital, or lifeline wasn't available. Again, not on our radar, but it came up often enough in what are the impediments to you moving here full-time, that we wanted to, to bring it to your attention. You know, there's a, a thing lately that a lot of us are thinking about, and that is, what do you need to age in place? And so what do people say they would need to age in place in Highlands? They need more transportation and delivery services. It's hard to age in place if you don't drive anymore to get groceries or other kind of services provided to you in your home. That's also related to elder assistance. You know, there seems to be a concern about, could I get the care I needed? That may not be medical care, but care to help me stay in place and, and remain in Highlands. And then another one that came up, and, and this may be somewhat a result of Hurricane Helene, because, you know, Hurricane Helene happened in September, a lot of us were actually here, is real difficulty getting reputable and responsive contractors. You know, everybody kinda needed help all at once. And we hear often, it's hard to get anybody to answer the phone, respond to a message, show up on time, and then do competent work. Again, these are things that are not under your control, but it was something that came up often enough as a concern about what makes it difficult for you to live in Highlands, that we just wanted to put it on the list.
Let me just add one thing. This is just one little strand here, you know, we're, we're just picking out what we've collated so far. There are a number of different themes that we're putting together, and we hope to be able to, to, to have further discussion.
Okay. So any questions?
Well, I don't, I, I almost asked if, you know, I mean, you're hearing this for the first time. Well, I don't, I, I almost asked if, you know, I mean, you're hearing this for the first time. When we heard it for the first time, we had a number of thoughts that were rolling through our minds. And I, I guess what I would say is we're hoping that this, and maybe you can tell us, we're hoping that this seems like a worthwhile endeavor to you and something that would warrant us continuing to dig and, and, and putting this information together with the idea that we could speak more about it, discuss more about it, interact with you more about it on behalf of residents, because that's, that's our thinking is we're trying to advocate for that population. And I suppose I'm asking somewhat for feedback, you know? Is anything that you heard surprising or disappointing or Jesus, it really isn't interesting or it really is interesting? And any thoughts you have for us going forward on how we might continue to communicate with you about it?
I have just a couple of questions, generally speaking, and appreciate you all doing this. Maybe I missed it in the beginning, but how many responses have you had?
So, well, we talked about reaching out. We talked about, you know, the number. I think, I think we're just under 300 responses now.
That's, that's fairly strong.
And again, we're, we're just whatever it is, seven, eight weeks into it. We're thinking if we can continue through the, through the year.
Right.
And, and, and just to comment on that, I don't think we can get to the thousand.
Right, understand.
Got to, I mean, you had, you know, consultants who had access to a lot of different things that, that we don't have access to. But we, we think, we think this is a really good start and, and that it's, it's got some weight to it.
Yeah, well, 300 as a starting point is pretty strong. I mean, that, that's pretty good. The other question I had, a couple of other things. One of them just, you know, one thing, the database, and I realize it's only one of those three categories, but the, the database available from the election office is, you know, the Excel spreadsheet is great and that can be put into simple mailers for, you know, you can mail it to every single voter for $350. So with a card and a QR code type thing, that's one thing, but.
I've done it.
Yeah, well, I have too. So, I mean, that's just an idea to reach other people, but maybe I misunderstood in the beginning. You were talking about the three categories and you mentioned homeowners. Okay, so that's who's eligible to take or just, I mean, like, you see what I'm saying? I mean, did they have to own a home?
We wouldn't know that, Commissioner Weller, but.
I just heard you say homeowners and I was curious about that.
And I would consider a long-term renter, a resident in our, it's just there's so few of them, but we just opened it up to residents and anybody could respond to the survey.
There's actually a lot more than, than you realize that are full-time residents that rent. And honestly, I'm one of them right now while I'm building a house, but I'm just, I was curious about it.
There's no limitation on who could respond.
That's perfect. Yeah, I just was curious about that.
And I'll go ahead and say this now, you know, there's been tension, you know, the homeowners, the business owners and so forth. Actually, I'm impressed with your survey and I think maybe this becomes a ground where both groups can kind of work together on common concerns, because livability, I think, is what everybody wants to see continue in Highlands.
Totally agree, Mr. Mayor. And we're not saying that any, you know, the, the business and the residents can't live together. I mean, we're mutually symbiotic, right? What we want to ensure is that Highlands remains livable for residents and that there's enough business to serve their needs and enough tourists to, to meet the business needs so that we are economically feasible and ultimately livable. And, you know, there was a, an article in just today's free paper from, I don't know, Mr. Potts. I don't know, he's a businessman, obviously, in Highlands, lives here. And he talks about our small town is a great investment in your personal lifestyle. Our standard of small-town mountain living is to be cherished and protected. We do need to recognize the limits to what our resources will support. And I think that's where we are. We want a balance and we want to be part of the discussion to the extent we can be and figure out where those competing interests can be synergistic.
Okay, very good. Well, thank y'all for coming and presenting tonight.
What do you think you were going to get some final numbers so that we can discuss?
Amy's a numbers person.
No, no.
I'm a deadline person.
Thanks very much. I guess, you know, the question to that becomes, when did you feel like you were done with the community plan? You remember you, you had, and that was like a 60-day period. It was, I think it was like December through January. You know, to your point, Commissioner Weller, we're trying to reach out as best we can with, with only the resources we have, which is, as you said, and, and I totally agree with you. I, I don't know what your experience was. Last election, we sent a postcard to everybody on the voter rolls and they couldn't put the ones that were undeliverable into my mailbox. I mean, there were so many of them that were undeliverable. And so that's, that's a great example, but I, I would just say two things. One, if you've got ideas on how we can do it, and we'll take you up on that idea. If there are any other ways that we can reach people, we'd love to know that. And, and then specifically to your, your, your question, I, I think we need to just close it down this cycle, maybe by Thanksgiving time, because really you're into the holidays then and we can always come back and do another one or something like that. But even if we're shy, everybody we could possibly reach. I, I think the information that we've even gathered so far would be very valuable to the community, the town leaders, business folks. So I honestly, I, I think we should talk about and, and if, if, if you don't think it's impertinent of us, we, we'd like to reach out to you and start thinking about, well, when can we have another discussion about this? Because as Kathy said, these specific comments are very detailed people are giving us. There are some people that are very passionate about what they think should happen and, and these are your constituents and the residents of the town. So I, I'd say we'll keep gathering, and again, we haven't discussed this in great detail. I'd say we'll, we'll try to keep gathering until November, but we'd like to see maybe getting something on the calendar with you to really dig into the results and get really granular so you can see what your folks are saying. You know, November, December, January, something like that.
And you'll have it collated by then, so we'll have it beforehand to help us.
I didn't used to wear, but I do now.
And if I might be able to throw out one potential next step, because this work is more than you can do. You already have a job and that we can do on our own. But I think it really needs some thought and study and good data and, and building out the pieces to the puzzle. I think of it in terms of like a Highlands 2030 special committee to just focus on the things. I don't think the issues are fundamentally going to change whether you have 300 people respond or 600 people respond. I think the issues are the issues. And a person that I think would be perfect to head up the effort, if he would choose to do it, is former Commissioner Brian Steeler, because he has experience on the government side, the business side, the community side, perceived to be very fair. And it seems like it would be a project that is in his wheelhouse and strength. So just a thought about what we could do next, so it simply just doesn't go away without any action or activity. Because I don't think the problems are going to get any better without some policy choices and thoughts.
The only other question I have is, does Brian know you were going to say that?
I might have run it by him.
I do want to say I asked Brian to watch tonight, but I did not ask him to watch for that, so. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, our next item, number 12, is the electric system outage map update. Matt Schuler.
Look at you double up tonight. While you're here, we're taking a van.
So what do you have before you?
Pull that, pull your microphone up closer, please.
Smoke them, I'm good. Nope, still not. Right. So what you have before you tonight is, it's a screenshot of a map and a proposal. And I'll, I'll get to those in just a second. Part of the project that we've been working on is to try to get a, a power monitor map that shows outages and et cetera, so that not only our staff can see that, but that the community can see that as well. So we had a few things to tackle. First, we had to realize that we don't know if the power's out either. So we started putting in some, some monitors on each pole. Now, we start off by monitoring the, the re-closer, which if, if you can imagine, basically it's kind of the main breaker for your home. And then you come down to a branch circuit and that will also have a re-closer. But as it gets into the smaller areas, maybe to the neighborhood, there'll only be an individual fuse. So what we put out to date covers each of the reclosures. Those carry more, more load and they will cover each area of town. But it just has a, a broader area that it covers. So that's what we put out to date. We plan on putting out 130 of these that'll cover each area down to the fuse level. So that'll get to, to each neighborhood. It will not get to each home and that's a, a very expensive thing. We'd have to put out 3,000 of these that have to be on each individual home. There's way better ways to cover that with AMI top metering systems. It'll tell you if, if one meters off or those types of thing. So most of the mapping agencies that, that most people are common with would be, you know, Duke or some large power company. They, most of those do their own outage mapping in-house. They have somebody design that and they do that in-house. So you don't find many companies that, that do that as a, you know, open source. So we started looking. Most of them wanted an AMI system that would tell, you know, all the homes, what are they, are they, they're on and off? Or they wanted a SCADA system and they wanted to collect data from one of those two proprietary sources. So if you have a, a SCADA system that automatically turns on and off breakers and reclosures and those things, it would monitor the power lines and the outage mapping comes with that. So we don't have that and that's a few million dollars down the road. We also don't have AMI so that we don't see each individual meter and we don't read that in real time. So we don't have those two resources. So we started looking for an outage map company that could take the data that we are collecting right now and disseminate that in a geographic map of some sort. And we found one company and that's Data Capable. And that's the, the proposal that you have. And this is for the, the mapping. They can take multiple data sources, different, they, they actually have some towns that don't even have any type of information. They use that only from somebody who's called in and reported an outage and they pop that up on the map. And so they go from towns that don't have any type of information gathering up to the one that you have in front of you, the, the map. This is from Kissimmee, in Kissimmee, Florida, Utility Authority, a much larger, you know, area. So it's a, I got the pretty simple version of this one. If you see the, the little red dot at the top, that's showing one customer that's out. I didn't want to get one that was like had dots all over it. So you'll see, that's what the map would look like. It would just be the Highlands area and each time that there's an area out, it would pop up. Ours would not be down to the single customer level. If we had one go out, it would be 19 customers or 26 customers or 40 or some larger area, because we're monitoring the re-closer. And then as we get smaller areas, then what information we give back to them will be a smaller number so that we'll, we can hone in more so on that. And this would be a, a public map. It, there's not an app associated with this. This is a mobile-friendly website. So, you know, once it's shown on the phone, it looks correct on the phone, kind of like an app, but it's, there's not a, you don't go to the Play Store and download the app. You actually would go to the website with your browser on your, your phone or your PC or whatever. And you could see that, that map. And so the proposal.
Matt, can I stop you?
Yes, sir.
Could they go to our website and access?
It would be a link. So they essentially, they would go to, to the Highlands website and then there'd be an outage map on there.
And you click on that and bingo.
It, it would be a link on ours. I'm sorry for that. It, it, the map would be hosted by another company, but it would be a link on our site. So you just go straight to highlandsc.org and then the outage map would be there and they would see it there.
Would we be using that? I mean, was our, would our town electric crew be using that?
No, they will, I'll give you what they say. For determining outages, it's still going to require the phone call. They, this won't go down to the customer level, so it would still require the phone call. The map has some abilities that we can't use yet. So we can use the map. So Kissimmee would use this map. A customer would report an outage. That outage would go to their response center. They would dispatch somebody. We don't have all those things in the background. We have Macon County 911 dispatch. So those are some things that we can grow into, but it already has the ability to do. But to start with, it's going to be pretty stripped down. It'll just be the map.
Still the same as Hayward. So Hayward, we can see the number of outages that we have fallen to.
Right, right. So we won't be able to report outages on this and I did want to stress that. You wouldn't be able to report outages on the map or the mapping site.
But could not our crews or our staff look on the map because the re-closer has tripped and know that there's an outage in that area?
They could, but I, currently I don't want to get them necessarily depending upon this until we are fully able to test it. And the reason for that, right now if my power monitor's battery goes dead, which it could in the middle of the winter, if it freezes, you know, it could go dead or something like that, then it can show an outage on the map and there not really be one. So there could be a false positive there. So I want them to continue to rely on the method that they have, which is the phone call to be dispatched by Macon County Dispatch. That way they're not trying to look at a map all the time and, and forego the dispatch. Does that make sense? We, I don't want to, I don't want to change that method until we're 100% sure that this is reliable. If that's, is that?
Then you're down at the fuse level.
Yes, yes. And, and there could be outages if they were to kind of just start not carrying a pager with them or anything like that. There could still be outages, even though this map doesn't show that. So somebody could still have the drop going to their house be torn down. It wouldn't show on the map because it's on an individual customer level.
I see.
If the fuse doesn't go out. So that, just wanted to clarify that. So we're, we're trying to grow into this. This has, like I said, it has more abilities than what we can use right now. So it would just be the map. And so the proposal part of this is it's $10,000 a year. And then there's a, the setup of the initial fee is $2,500. So it'd be, this year would be $12,500. Next year it would be $10,400 as an ongoing subscription base of that. If that, if, if that's how you'd like to go with this, to have this publicly disseminated to the town.
Matt, what's the timeframe that we would grow into this map?
Well, it'll take a little bit of setup, so it's going to be a month or so to get everything set up.
No, I mean, we would have the capability to actually, it seems to me from what you're saying that, that, and I don't want to minimize the, the potential here, but it seems like what you're, you're saying that we would have limited use at this point of this product.
Right, we, we plan on having all 130 of them out. I have most of the hardware in the office. We're doing this as, my team's doing this individually as a project of ourselves. So we don't have another contractor who's installing these devices for us. We're, we're building them, assembling them and installing them each one ourselves. So right now we, we already have covered all the reclosures. I've got a simple map in my office, which is not anything that, that public or anybody would want to see. We, so in our IT world, we, we essentially monitor all of our servers and our computers, whether they're up or down. So I'm using that software right now to monitor what we have out now and they're pretty stable. I mean, we, we've not had any issues with them when they're up. They say they're up, when they say they're down, they're down. So we're pretty confident on that part of it. And we cover those reclosures right now. So I can see essentially a, a limited view of town currently. It's, I don't see down to the individual level, but when we've got, you know, 200 customers out, I can see that part right now with that re-closer going out. So we could, we'll start using the map on the broad scale and then as we get more monitors in place, we'll alter the map so that it'll show the smaller areas as we continue to fill those in. And we plan on having those done within this fiscal year.
Fiscal year or calendar year?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Yep, fiscal year.
I think it was Amy made the comment to her point. If if a customer isn't able to report to this software, so to speak.
Correct.
Uh, they're they're still making the nine-one-one call.
Yes, that's right.
They're saying, hey, I'm at fourteen ninety-two, get out of Dodge, drive. Then then this.
It's for informational purposes only. That would be.
For informational purposes, for who?
For the public. So they could go, a lot of times, we have a lot of questions on, you know, is my area out? You can also add comments here. You'll, if you can see it in that in the copy that I've got, it gives a estimated restoration time. So our guys could add comments as we gather those, you know. A lot of times, we, people will call into the office, and they'll say, hey, can you give me an idea of when the power's going to be back on? And most of the time, our lineman can give us an idea, you know, they'll say, and and I don't mean by the by the hour, but they may say, hey, look, it's tore all the pieces. It's going to be in the morning, you know. So we can put those things on there and say it's going to be restoration time twenty-four hours. So we can put some of that information up here as we gather it. And as we grow into it, if we can push that through, get nine-one-one to, you know, some agree, some some MOU, random, how we're going to do that, some, then we could start allowing them to respond on to this and to report their outage on this, but it's going to take some work behind the scenes to make that happen. The the map has the ability to do it. We just don't have that in-house right now.
So the inevitable goal, this would get us potentially down the road to the setup that Haywood has, like you referenced.
Yes.
It would tell you, like, if I, if, yeah, if one was closed, it would have a circle and say eight. So you knew that eight homes were out.
Yes.
Um, and then you, it would, it would notify you that you're one of the eight. I mean, that one does, Haywood does. And then you could go on it. I mean, I'm just saying, eventually we would get there. The goal, the goal would be.
That's the goal.
But we're not going to be at a Duke system where it's, I assume that's the AMI, where they know when your meter's out.
That's right.
And they tell, yeah, okay.
And and if we were to go down that road in the future, in five years or whatever, this map is set up to do that. The the software from Data Capable can, obviously, with this one, you know, they're showing one one outage right now, so that's an AMI system. So it can grow to that point. This is just the software to get started with, and then we'll continue to grow into that as we go.
Which you you all have been on Haywood for a long time. I was on it for twenty-five years, so and we grew into it, because it had nothing before, and then it grew into what we're trying to get to.
Yes, that's right.
I'm just trying to understand. Okay.
This was totally in response to Helene.
Yeah, understood, and information.
People managing me at one o'clock in the morning, wanting to know when they were getting power back on.
Right.
And they couldn't, didn't have anything to see.
Gives them the interface.
Gives them at least a vision of something.
In the future.
And and I would contend, because of our livability and small community, the tendency of people to call in outages, that's not going to go away anytime soon. People still, even with the map, they'd want to call in.
Right, and they'll still, they'll always have that ability. I don't, I don't believe we'll ever take that part away. I believe they're always going to be able to call in. This would just be for, we have a lot of folks who call in and say, hey, my blink cameras are off. Is my house out of power? We fielded a lot of those calls.
Yeah.
At least those folks could look at the map and say, oh, the whole town's out. I guess my blink camera's off for that reason. And then you don't have to answer that call and waste that resource answering, this is why your blink cameras are off, you know.
I may not be understanding it completely, man. I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it.
You say, you know, you could put that on there if they're they're going to get it back in three hours, or not till the morning, or whatever. So somebody has to physically um generate the map from the closed, from the signaling re-closers that say that they're.
No, 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 no. So to to get into the weeds of it, we have a collection device right now that collects information from all the poles that we monitor. So it comes back in a text form to us, and it's in a very raw format that says, like, pole one, two, three, four has been out, and it was last seen at this particular time. So you know it's been out for three hours, and and that's just raw data. This company would take our raw data that we would push out to them continually. And so it it'll, essentially, it's got just a VPN that goes to them continually. They read our data, and then this map responds to that. So if it goes off, then the map will show that automated in real time. It's the response that would have to have somebody. So anytime you have that response, you know, you've got to have a line crew who's assessed it. You can say, oh, they're they're assessing it, and then we could put that on there, you know, once, a lot of times, you you don't have that, but sometimes you could say, okay, your outage is going to be restored roughly in six hours.
And also, once it's on the map, let's say a neighborhood, but then power comes back, then it it goes off the map.
It'll clear, that's right, yes.
Okay. So the bottom line is, we have to make a decision. Do we want to allocate ten thousand dollars to begin?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Yeah, there's a, on the back page, there's a one-time fee for the setup.
Well, but this is the first step in trying to be a lot more informative, I guess, in interaction with, so, yeah.
That's right. And 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 I welcome this, because I know some of our customers have been, you know, frustrated, especially with Helene. So to me, this is a small investment, trying to provide better communications with our.
Well, we also have, as we know, a lot of out-of-town residents who come in, and they want to know, is their house going to be warm or is it?
Right. There you go.
They'd have access to check it on their own.
Maybe, maybe now, with this, yes. So I'll make the motion that we pass this budget amendment for twelve thousand five hundred dollars to start the map rolling.
I'll second that.
Second. Any further discussion?
Hearing none. Is is this an annual contract?
Yes, so.
So once, once we're in, I mean, we could cancel this if it's not, if it's not as beneficial as we think it is.
That's right. So one-year contract, renews every year.
But this is the base level, too. It would go up.
No, pretty much, that's.
So regardless of how many things you said, you know, when we get, go back from a hundred and thirty-four to five hundred.
It's more or less based on your customer number and your area. So we're pretty much set for that price. It it does have a four percent increase annually, so next year's ten thousand four hundred, and then so on and so forth. But pretty much, will be set at that price.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
All right, give it a try. Yeah, give it a try.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Okay, our next item, donation of the Fire Department Swiftwater Rescue Trailer, Chief Gerhardt.
Good evening. So in the early two thousands, we had, how many divers do we have? Probably twelve.
Yeah.
Twelve or fourteen Swiftwater folks also dive, scuba diving certified people. Since then, we've grown older. A lot of those folks have retired. So a lot of our equipment has become outdated, as everything does. But Glenville Cashers Rescue has, after the most recent accident and drowning in Glenville, what, two months ago or so, they have really brought it up in their department and with ours to re-up their dive certifications. So they're going to have approximately, I think, eight divers, and there's five from our department that are kind of joining together to create this team. And one thing that we thought that we would like to do is, we have a trailer, it's a twenty-foot enclosed two thousand five model Horton trailer, and we would like to make a donation to Glenville Cashers Rescue of that trailer to use to haul the equipment. Can be used as a command center, has a heater, air conditioner in it. If we have a dive event in our district, they will be the first ones that we call. So it could be used in our district.
It's a cooperative relationship.
Correct.
Mutual aid.
Yes. So that, the membership and officers voted to donate it, so that would be our recommendation.
Okay. Any questions of the chief?
So through state statute, the legal process, there is a resolution that you have in your packet that would need to be approved.
Okay.
To donate the trailer to another government entity.
So I'll move that we pass this resolution for the donation of the two thousand five Horton car hauler to the Glenville Cashers fire and rescue, or rescue of cashers.
I'll second that.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. All right. Thank you, chief. Okay, the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Night, everyone.